Hey guys, welcome and welcome back to my channel. If you don't know, my name is Denasia, but you can call me Nay and that is no E. So today's video is going to be the fourth um episode in my nursing school series. And yeah, it is currently Wednesday. Um I had an assessment test last week and I thought that I got a seventy-two y'all, but I actually found out I got a seventy-eight. So it wasn't as bad as I thought. Two points from a B, like it it's not that deep. Um and that was the first test, so I feel like I'm fine. Um, but yeah, this week is Wednesday, it's Juneteenth, so I didn't have any school today. So I've kind of had a slow week. That's why I'm starting a video today. Um but yeah, it's Wednesday, it's Juneteenth. Tomorrow is Thursday, which means I have clinical. Gotta be waking up at four thirty in the morning, y'all. Four thirty in the morning. But I also need to get my life together and just like start eating better and working out and doing all that as well as being in nursing school because I can't just let the rest of my life just slip away. Um, but yeah, I'm just vibing right now. I just got out the shower. Um. I'm thinking about taking my little cousin to the swimming pool. He keep saying, "Naysha, the swimming pool." I'm thinking about it. Let's see how hot it is outside. Oh, it's eighty-four and the sun not out. Alright, I'm gonna take him. I'm gonna take him, it's fine. And he's not like a big boy yet. He's a little baby. He's literally like two. So like, it's not like how it is with some kids, you could just... Why did I just do a whole circle? It's not like how it is with some kids, you could just take them and you know, just watch them, just supervise. No, like I have to get in the water with him. And I just got out the shower, but I don't mind. But yeah, I'll talk to y'all. I think my boyfriend's gonna come with me, so I gotta see where he at. He just got off work. Alright, y'all. So my boyfriend is in fact on the way. Move, Cash! I'm not picking you up right now. Uh, my boyfriend is in fact on the way, so I'm about to, um... I need to wash our towels, like the white towels. I'm about to do that, start a load of that. I need to put... I think that's really all I need to do for cleaning. I really need to wipe down my dress and stuff, I'm not gonna lie. I don't feel like doing that, so I'm not. And then I'm gonna pack my bag for clinical tomorrow. So while those are washing, I'm gonna go ahead and, um... While those are washing, I'm gonna go ahead and mark off the stuff that I've done already this week as far as assignments go. So basically, what I've started doing is I leave the beginning of the week for getting all like the annoying assignments done that are just like busy work. And then I use the end of the week to actually study for the test. Um, today I actually do need to do some studying. I have my found- and my second foundations test on Tuesday. My last foundations test, um, I got an eighty, which I don't feel like an eighty is bad at all for your first exam of nursing school, however comma. I can't continue getting eighties because that's gonna push it a little bit too close on my grade, okay? Um, so yeah, I'm hoping this exam for at least a high eighty. Okay, of course, an A is preferable, but a high A, a high in the high eighties, a high B, I can deal with that. So I'm gonna start, I'm gonna lock in today. And I will be locked in every day, every single day until Tuesday. So yeah, um, I'm gonna show y'all. Also, y'all, I'm so excited. So my planner is like, this planner is not as cracked up. I love this planner, don't get me wrong. She's T, but she's T because I made her that way. Like the way I color coded everything and made different boxes for all my classes and I have my week view. I was like, this is so T. And then I like, I be looking at my other friend's planner and they're trying so hard to make it like the planners that they have fit into the nursing school type of schedule. So y'all, through the Society of Black Students in Healthcare, which is my organization, I'll put the information on the screen so you can check it out because I really get sick of doing a spill every video. But I'm gonna release a planner. And I think it'll be so nice to have a planner that's like tailored to nursing and like other students in healthcare, it's like nursing and medical students. I think that could be so freaking nice. And then like, because I know what we need in a planner, you know? So yeah, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna try to have that released before, um, the end of the year. I started on like, like... Should I show y'all? Okay, I'll say all of it. So I started on, I actually like started on it. It's almost done, but there's a few things that I kind of want to tweak because I just want to make sure that it's customizable to everybody, not just nursing students. But look, this is the cover page. Y'all can't tell me that isn't so stinking cute. Society of Black Students in Healthcare Planner? Like a health, a planner made specifically for students that are in healthcare. Isn't that so nice? And it also has, it also has like stuff in it, like, um, I don't know what you call it, not motivational. I don't, I don't really consider myself to be a motivational speaker or nothing, but I have been heard. I have a word, I have been told I have a word of wisdom or two. So you know, I put them in there and I think it's really nice. But back to this, unfortunately. So the big picture this week is to study for foundations. I have like twenty-nine million uh foundations exams. I mean, foundations assignments. I have one assignment for promoting a new lifestyle and one assignment for holistic assessment because we had a test for holistic assessment on Monday. But yeah, let me go get my iPad so I can mark out what I already need. Okay, so this is week six. Crazy to say. This is week six of nursing school. I have a total of thirteen weeks. So we're almost halfway done, y'all. Good morning, girlies. So it's like almost five thirty in the morning. Yeah, it's five twenty-six. I have to be at clinical at six thirty, so in about an hour, but I'm still trying to hurry up because I need to ref- I might come home and refresh my braids after clinical, but chill, I'm not there to look cute. Because I'm literally just wearing them in a ponytail. I'm gonna do my edges though, of course. Y'all, y'all remember in the last video when I forgot to do my edges? If y'all haven't watched, this is the fourth video in the series. To get to now we banner, to get to another situation, I gotta watch the other videos. Yeah, but I'm kind of trying to hurry up today because, um, I really want to get some coffee. Because I didn't take my, um, I stayed up till like basically eleven-thirty last night, so I only got like five hours of sleep. And when it was time for me to go to sleep, it was eleven-thirty. So I didn't take my sleeping pill, so it took forever for me to get to sleep. Because when I take my sleeping pill, like I don't take it unless I know I'm gonna be able to get a full like eight hours. Because, um, like if I take it and then cut the sleep off, it just makes it ten times worse. So I went pure, just raw. Physiolyzing melatonin last night, which I did get good sleep actually, but I don't feel as energized as I normally do. Because normally, on clinical days, I literally go to sleep at like nine o'clock, can't you not? I'm just packing up my little clinical bag, my foldable clipboard, I step the scope. That's really all I bring. And then I'm gonna bring my, uh, my scrub jacket. It has Denasia Mosley. Can't wait to add that RA BSN next summer, baby. And then I gotta fill up my water bottle too. I'll do that right before I leave. Alright, y'all. I'm finna go. Peace out. Alright, y'all. I'm at home. I'm at home. Clinical was actually very good today. I learned a lot. My feet hurt though. My feet hurt. And guess what I'm doing tonight, y'all? Why my clinical group got me going country dancing? I lowkey don't feel like going, but like for them, I'm gonna do it. Because I'm, I'm actually tired, but for them, I'm gonna do it. For them, I'm gonna do it. So yeah, it's six right now. I'm about to probably edit. So I can not be bothered by this editing. I'm probably about to edit and then I'm gonna probably start getting ready at like seven. I think I'm about to refresh my braids first though, so they can have time to dry and settle. And then I'm gonna edit and get in the shower. Because I think I have to wrap the hair like in a scarf. But I guess I could wrap it in a scarf while I'm in the shower. I don't know, y'all. I'm finna put, at least put this, uh, this weekly vlog from last week, I'm finna at least put it, take it off the SD card and put it on my iPad. So I can at least have it out the way because, um, both of my SD cards are full. So y'all know I've been on my zone. What? Video number four. Video number four. And guess what? We're gonna do number five after that. And we're gonna do number six after that. We're gonna do number seven after that. We're gonna do number eight after that. And we're gonna do number nine after that. And at week ten, y'all know what it is? Peace out. Final season. I'm done. Four week. Yeah, but I'm chilling. I should actually do this assignment. I'm not going to though. I don't feel like it. I've, I've done enough for today. Um, let's see. I don't have no storage nowhere, like literally no storage. But honestly, that's what happens to baddies. Hey, y'all. So I ended up refreshing my braids and my camera had went dead while I was doing it. But I ref- I ended up refreshing my braids and now I'm just about to... I think I'm gonna take this off. But I'm about to, um, go ahead and start on my makeup. I told y'all last video that I'm a whole makeup artist and y'all haven't seen me. I told y'all last video that I'm a whole makeup artist and y'all haven't seen me be my face once in these nursing videos. So yeah, I can't go out like that. I'm not gonna lie. I can't, can't go out like that. I can't go out like that. So yeah, I'm about to be my face. I'm not gonna talk to you. I'm not gonna yai because I really just want to like listen to music and just vibe and stuff. It's currently eight o'clock. It's eight oh eight. And I just need to be leaving here by like nine twenty. No, you should have it. Alright, y'all. Makeup is done, minus lashes. So I'm about to go ahead and, um, put on my outfit. Y'all already see my hunky-tonky outfit? Let's see if it's T. Alright, y'all. I'm home. Debrief for the night while I get unready because I know once I take these clothes off and this makeup and get comfy, it's not gonna be no talking, no chatting, no nothing. Just straight catching Z's, okay? But yeah, I had a lot of fun actually, to be honest. Love my clinical group. Y'all are all so like, they all, like we're all so different, but like it just, it just meshes, you know? And, um, the, we went to Billy Bob's Hunky Tonky. And I actually had a lot of fun. They played like a good mix of music, but, um, my friend told me that it is not normally like that. It's normally like different, but I liked it like that, so. Hey guys, so it is currently Saturday. It's like seven o'clock. Um, yeah, I kind of had a late start to my day today. That's why I'm just now talking to y'all. And yesterday I didn't do anything. I did get some studying done though, so. I actually got a lot of studying done. I'll show y'all everything I did and stuff, um, when I get back. But right now, I'm about to go to Ulta to get some makeup and then my friends coming over after that. So this is the outfit. It's just a chill little like set. And it has like, can y'all, super duper cute. But yeah, I'm gonna take y'all with me to Ulta, so don't stress not, stress not. Okay, I'm leaving Ulta. My friend's waiting on me at my house. But I literally got two concealers and one like elf lip gloss and it was eighty-six dollars. What? And then I had a ten dollars off fifty coupon because I'm always freaking here. And they tell me it don't, it doesn't apply on prestige. Oh, Too Faced bitch, you're not that girl. How you think you... Okay, she is that girl. Let me not lie. Sponsor me. No, she is that girl. But still, I got two different colors. I got the, um, hold on, y'all. I got Too Faced Chestnut and Too Faced Butterscotch. Chestnut is my normal girl. I literally never finished a whole makeup products ever. Except for the Red Beauty highlighter and this now. Oh, and the Fenty eavesdrop. Let me not tell stories. I finished up that Fenty eavesdrop too, multiple times. But yeah, I also got butterscotch. My mom has that one. And I feel like sometimes when I want to give glam, like I want to give a dramatic beat, the butterscotch looks very close to my skin tone, so it doesn't give like that like, you know, that bright under eye that I'd be wanting sometimes? So I got that one too. But yeah. I'm supposed to be doing my friend's makeup, so we're gonna see how that's gonna go. That was gonna go good. I haven't done makeup in a minute though, lowkey. High key, actually. Inside out. Hey guys, tell me why it's Sunday. I didn't talk, no, I didn't talk to y'all yesterday. I'm lying. It's Sunday. And I'm about to go to brunch with, we'll get to her later in a short moment. But y'all, tell me why I literally brought my camera. Y'all know I stay forgetting to bring my camera. Why is there no SD card in it? Because I have started editing this week's video because I'm like, let me get on it. Because I'm not gonna have time and I, and I, I'm gonna upload every Sunday no matter what. Yeah, but I'm, I'm with... Her name's Umu. She's real.
Let's not do that. Y'all know me. Y'all have seen me on many occasions. So we don't gotta introduce me no more. Y'all know me.
Do they?
Yes.
Nah, this, she a real cool chick. Love her. Don't, I know it might seem like sometimes that we don't like each other. That's because we don't. But we love each other. The like, the liking, it comes and goes. It's in phases.
Phases.
Small.
Periods.
Like this morning, I didn't like her vibe. I didn't.
I didn't like, honestly, I need to address you. Honestly, let's get this camera. Because you will be addressed from the camera.
Like, I didn't like her vibe this morning. I didn't. But this Sunday's the card. She a real cool chick. I be cacking her for hours.
I know.
Yeah, cut, cut the camera. Hey, y'all. So I'm back at home. I took this chick to a real cool location. Now I brought her back home with me. Um, yeah, and we got some Hummer Bucks on the way back. Brought me back home. I live here, boo. Okay. She's a patient of mine. Don't worry.
Please don't worry.
Yeah, you can sit down over here if you want to. Oh, you, you too busy want to be seen, huh? It's okay. I'll move the camera.
No, I don't care to be seen.
It's okay. I'll move the camera. Mukbang, let's talk about how Umu is the friendliest chick I know. The chick's so friendly and just fake and just, she don't even like half these chicks she be with.
Girl, what are you talking about? I don't even be with nobody.
The truth.
I stay at home. I be telling them, they said, "Come get me, come get me." You don't want to get me.
Do a lot.
But we with her boyfriend. It's okay. I love, love to.
Every time she be like, "Come get me," I come get her. I pull up on the head.
You so can. Please stop. Night, poor.
Never tell me to come get you. You must be thinking that's destiny. But this Hummer bus is good. I ain't had it in a minute. We all.
The same one.
We all got Jamaican punch. Laker.
Laker, what kind of Laker? This is sweet.
She just chatting.
Way lowkey do.
Good. Hop off me. Usually I don't do this often, but since recruiting isn't an option. Hey, y'all. So it is currently Monday. It's like ten fifteen. Um, I'm finna go down to the leasing office and get some studying. As I could see last night, y'all, last night, I did a whole Sunday reset. I could deep clean my room. I was talking about, I was getting into it. And then I took a shower, did my skincare and I got to just take a, just, I, that was the best sleep of my life. You know, we go on clean sheets, you clean and shit. It was amazing. Um, yeah, but we back on the grind today. My test is tomorrow at nine AM. So this is our last full day studying and I'm gonna wake up two hours before the test. I do some studying. But yeah, wish me so much luck, y'all. Okay, y'all. So I just finished the last of my notes. And now I'm finna do some practice questions. I'm gonna go through these practice questions with y'all because this is my first time doing practice questions for this chapter. So we're gonna see. How, we gonna see where y'all at too. Okay. Which client most likely requires special peri- preoperative assessment and treatment as a result of existing medication regimen? A man who takes an ACE inhibitor because he has hypertension? A man who regularly treats his rheumatoid arthritis with over the counter non-steroid anti-inflammatory drugs? A woman who takes daily thyroid supplements to treat her longstanding hypothyroidism? And a woman who takes daily anticoagulants to treat atrial fibrillation? I think the answer is very clear here. A woman who takes daily anticoagulants because that's gonna greatly re-increase the risk for bleeding. Actually, no, I just thought about it. I'm gonna take the test and then when I have the rationale, I'll tell y'all what I put and then also the right answer instead of having to do it all twice. That makes more sense. Okay, I got six out of ten. Not bad for the first one. If y'all was here last week when I was doing the practice questions, when I was doing them first, uh, the first couple ones, I was getting like three out of ten, like two out of ten. But let's see what I got wrong. The first question that we talked about, about the anticoagulants, I got that one right, obviously. Okay, a toddler is undergoing hernia repair surgery. What action will be best, will best reduce the client's anxiety? I said, clearly explain the rationale for each preoperative intervention, which I know that one's kind of crazy for a toddler, but let me tell you what the right answer was and I'll tell you why I didn't pick that one and y'all see why I picked this one. The right answer was apply equipment and perform preparation after anesthetic has taken effect. I didn't pick that one because, but now I thought about it, it's a toddler. So the toddler doesn't need to understand it. Well, they do, but like the, as long as the parent understands, a toddler is only gonna understand so much. So now that I think about, I should have picked that one. But the reason why I didn't is because they just been stressing to us so much in these damn lectures that, um, informed consent is so important. So you can't just drug people up and then do what you want. Things, understand what they're doing before all that. But in this case, it's a toddler. So yeah, that makes sense. Um, the next question was the nurse recognizes that palliative surgery is performed for what purpose? And I got that one right. To lessen the intensive, intensity of an illness. So palliative surgery is not curative. It's just to help with symptoms or to lessen the intensive or slow progression. It's not curative. Like a lot of times this happens with cancer, um, with cancer patients. It's not gonna cure the cancer, but it can help like not cause so much pain or not have such a decrease in like, um, function. The nurse learning knows that the term perioperative phase recurs to, refers to care given to the client. The nurse learning knows that the term perioperative phase recurs to, refers to care given to the client. Before, during, and after the operative phase. I got that one right. A nurse is reviewing post-operative protocols with the client, including an explanation and demonstration of how to use an incentive spirometer. How does the nurse? How does the nurse know that? The teaching of the incentive spirometer was effective? I put, the client repeats the explanation and instructs in one's own words to demonstrate understanding. And the correct answer was, the client completes a return demonstration and inhales with lips tightly sealed around the mouthpiece. While sitting up right in bed. Honestly, if y'all wouldn't have known me to be real with you, the reason I got that one wrong is because I couldn't remember if the, if that was the moment you breathed out or the moment you breathed in. But the incentives for, there's the moment you seen how, well, you could breathe in, so, yeah. Um. What else? Monitor the cli- okay, so the next one was basically. You had gall, I mean gallbladder removal thirty six hours earlier, the nurse confirms he has not had a bowel movement yet prior to surgery. How should the nurse best respond to this assessment finding? And I got that one right, it was to monitor the client closely and promote fluid intake. I think, is this the last one?
No.
Um, a nurse's priority responsibility intraoperatively is, I got that one right, which is client safety. And. This, what is this, number nine, I got this one wrong, it was a select all that applies, I'll tell you why I got it wrong in a minute. It says, um, your educating an older adult client about products that cause bleeding that should be avoided before surgery. My, I put ginkgo, which is like a herbal supplement, warfarin, and ibuprofen, I forgot aspirin. I was debating, I picked that one, but I remember something that's like that I heard about aspirin like. During lecture, but I don't know for future reference. And the nurse is teaching a client about post-operative pain management, the client states, I would like to use as little pain management as possible after surgery, will anything else help to relieve my pain? Which responses appropriate? There, I got that one right, there's several non-pharmaceutical medication and methods to promote. To reduce pain and anxiety, let me teach you about some of them. Okay. So I got that one, I did that one pretty good, take another quiz. Okay y'all, so I just got through making the layout of my memory eight. So that was why I was going through the prep reviews and doing a prep review for each topic. And then based off how well I did on each topic, that's what I decided is gonna be majority on my memory eight. So the one I did worst on was medication. And then these are the two that I did best on over here. So they're tiny, cause I clearly know them, if I got perfect scores on them. And then these ones are kinda equal, but you can see medication administration is a little bit bigger and so is this one. Um, these are the two that I did the worst on, I got a six out of ten on this one. And then I got a six out of ten on this one, which is oxygenation, and then I got um a nine out of ten on pain and comfort. And a seven out of ten on um perioperative care, so. That's how I decided to do it. Now all I have to do is actually make the memory eight, but I think I'm gonna do that after I have lunch. Because it doesn't take much brain power to make the memory eight, so let me just be making it. Right now, what I think I'm about to do until, cause I'm gonna go up and eat at one o'clock. Until one, I'm gonna go ahead and um go through the chapters, like the actual textbook. And just highlight any information that wasn't on the um. Just skim through the chapters and any information that I see in the textbook that wasn't on um. The lecture notes, I'm gonna go through and add it to my notes, so that I can make sure that I touch on it, look it up, whatever I need to do, and then put it on my memory eight. So I'm gonna do my memory back at the house, just because the memory eight doesn't take brain power, like. I literally just am writing, it just takes time, but it doesn't take. A lot of brain power, so I'm gonna do that first. And then my nose is running a little bit, so I really need to go get like um some tissue. Alright y'all, I'm about to do my memory eight. Um, I'm thinking. I'm just gonna come back to y'all after every piece is done. So we're gonna start with oxygenation. It's currently eight thirty-three and I'll be back to y'all when I'm finished with oxygenation. Alright y'all, it's nine sixteen and I just finished up oxygenation. I'm trying, I'm gonna hope I can finish up comfort and pain by, what time is it? I'm gonna finish comfort and pain by ten. It's nine forty-nine and I just finished comfort and pain management. What's this next piece? Oh, snap, the next piece is medication administration, so I'll be back at ten forty-five. Hopefully I finish before then, but if not, ten forty-five, that's cool, cause this is the biggest part. Actually, I'mma do this part last, I lied. Um, I'm about to do perioperative care and I'll be back at. I'll be, I'mma try to be back by ten thirty. Hey y'all. It's currently ten forty-four, I did all of my memory eight except for this part. Medication administration. I'm finna get it over with though, trying to hype myself up, y'all. I'mma be done with this by eleven forty-five, sleep by twelve, cause I gotta wake up. I really could wake up. Nah, I'mma wake up at seven still. So I can watch some Nexus nursing videos and let her yell at me before the test. Y'all know what this means, what? Little miss, I'm done. And I have space left, which is perfect, cause tomorrow I'mma wake up at seven, test is at nine. I'mma watch some Nexus nursing videos and then like while I'm doing my practice questions, something sticks out to me and I'm like, ooh, T. I should probably write that down, I can write it right here, if I can remember. Goodnight. I love you guys so much, see you tomorrow for the test, say a prayer for me right now. Actually. If you have good intentions, say a prayer for me right now, I don't know, my grandma said I'm be letting everybody pray for you, so I don't know about that. Alright y'all, it's currently eight fifty-seven, my test opens up at nine. So I'm about to go ahead and get ready to take my test. I'mma come back and talk to y'all um after my test is over and let y'all know what I got and then. We'll end the video from there, pray for me y'all, oh Jesus. Jesus, please, please. But yes, Jesus, allow me to be able to recall all the information needed on this test, allow my thoughts to be clear. Allow me to be able to go through all the correct thinking processes to get to the correct answers, Jesus, pray that you allow me to get an A on this test. In Jesus's name, I pray, amen. Amen. Alright, did I tell y'all? I think I did, but if y'all don't know, this is a foundations test. Foundations of nursing test two. Test one, I got an A D. Test two. We're shooting for. I don't know, honestly, I'm shooting for a ninety, but if I get anything over eighty-five, I'm gonna call it a win. But yeah, um, I'm finna go ahead and turn my phone off and start the test. Hey guys, so I'm back and guess who just got an A? So I got a ninety-four. Yeah, I got a ninety-four. And guess what, remember last time I told y'all that I had to pick up the textbook? I just skewed and I pick up that textbook, I did skim through it though. But y'all didn't read and I got a ninety-four, so I think I figured out what works for me in foundations. Now what I need to do is figure out holistic assessment, if you have any tips, hit them in the comments below. But yeah, I love y'all, thank y'all so much for watching, please remember to like, comment, and subscribe. So I know that y'all are enjoying the videos, I'm working really hard for y'all, y'all, I'm a nurse, so I'm getting dragged through the mud and I'm still taking time. To edit these long videos for y'all, because I love y'all. Yeah, so if y'all can just do me a favor, hit that like, comment, and subscribe button. And also make sure you follow me on all my social media and we will be opening up um. We will be opening up memberships again to join the Society of Black Student Healthcare. I recommend any black student that is pursuing any career in healthcare, we have uh pre-med, pre-dental, pre-P A, pre-nursing, pre. We also have nursing students, medical students, dental, like. At any career in healthcare, I recommend you join the organization, it not only gives you opportunities and resources, but. It's also just like a sense of community, of being able to connect with other people and network, network with other people in your field. We also have super cute merch, roll the clip. But yeah, I love y'all, thank you guys so much for watching, bye.